Meeting to order. Superintendent, would you welcome, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two students, Nicole Helms and Anthony Malisi, who represent Skills USA and represent our school as president and vice president. They're going to formally introduce themselves a little bit later because they're on the agenda. But I also like them to come up and join the chairman and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job!
Thank you.
In accordance with Mass General 940 CMR 2910, remote participation, adopted by Greater Lowell Technical School Committee, April 17, 2014. Committee Man LeMay will be participating at tonight's meeting remotely due to geographical distance. And this meeting is being recorded.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Gigi?
Here.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yeah.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
Do we have any public appearances?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
The school committee communications, do we have any of those? Report of the superintendent's student representative. There was a conflict tonight. And, uh, you want to explain further?
Yeah, Mr. - yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Peña. Gabriel Peña's got a conflict. I think he's got a track meet that was outside the district. Uh, I do have his write-up. And I guess, uh, in light of me reading this, I think you can take a peek at it. A few things are going to be discussed tonight, specifically from some of our students here. Also, in front of you is a list, which coincides with the students' report, of a variety of upcoming events. I know you get this frequently this time of year, so you're well aware of some of the major events coming up. I do want to say to the general public also that pending any other weather issues, and I'm not trying to be funny, uh, the last day of school is June 22nd. Obviously, one of our larger events here is our graduation on June 8th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, the report of the treasurer. The treasurer's, uh, not here right now. And Ray, uh, Chairman Booton, I mean, Committee Man Booton is going to read.
No, this is - this is the warrant.
Oh, I thought he was going to read something. We have approval of the warrant? Take a little call?
Are you making a motion to waive the reading?
Yes.
Second?
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Espinoza?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the amount of $3,142,945.03. Motion by Mr. O'Hare? Second?
Second.
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Espinoza?
Yes. Any additional update with the Secretary of State correspondence with the General Counsel? Uh, we're going to put all that into the executive session. All right, we'll do it next. I think we just waived it.
You want Mike to come up? Mr. Chairman?
I've been advised by the Secretary of State's office that the materials that they need to prepare the ballot for the biennial state election have been received and are in proper form. Um, I know that, um, we sent those pieces of correspondence to the superintendent and also to Mr. Bahu, who was the clerk of the committee. And as I said earlier this week, we were told that the paperwork was in order.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much.
Excuse me, when do you expect to receive that? All that paperwork? Not the actual ballot, but the markup of the ballot, anyway?
I'm not exactly sure, Mr. O'Hare. I think they spend the spring sort of organizing the material. And there was an email that was distributed about two or three weeks ago, the last meeting, where there was some explanation for their timeframe. I don't have all the dates in my head, but I can certainly pull that out and send that up and recirculate it.
Are they going to have that ready for Election Day?
I will. They would have you-
I mean, most people are out - just... Most people are into their election right now, campaigning. We don't even know a lot of the things. If we could get, uh, something back for - When do you think it's going to take place?
I don't know. I know that over the course of the summer, they do a lot of work. And my recollection is that the ballots are ready sometime in August.
Yeah.
So, uh, as far as local nomination papers and those kinds of things are concerned, I think you'd have to check with each of the four towns. Uh, and then wherever you-
Well, I checked - I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I checked with one of the town members, a city member, and they said they were just - They're no longer part of the operation. It's coming out of - Well, my point is, if, you know, you got - right now, you got a couple of state elections coming up. You got all sorts of elections coming up. People are into their election mode. We don't even know when it's going to take place.
Well, the election is in November.
Yeah.
And my recollection is the ballots will be released at some point in August. And I - all I can suggest, Mr. O'Hare, is that you check with the clerk's office of the communities and find out what their local rules are. I just - I don't know.
I've checked with the clerk, and that person has been removed from that position. Now, I don't know who is actually doing - Well, I thought it was going to be a result of something that came out of here, but-
I don't believe so.
I think it's very clear to us that there is a confusion between the state and the local cities and towns. And I think that all we need to do is sit back and wait for them to make their decisions. That's pretty much how it's been for the last four or five years. So, when they tell us "It's time to go get your papers", it's "Time to go get our papers".
I just saw two - I just left the campaign party. It has to be 90 people in one of them, and I didn't even count anything close to the other. But I mean, that's a - isn't that an advantage for somebody, rather than us saying, "We know it's going to happen, but we really don't know how it's going to take place"?
Mr. Booton? Actually, I don't think so, because if I remember the dates right, the primary is on September 5th. And that's a Democratic-Republican primary. We won't have a primary for the seat - For anybody who runs for the seat. So, their paperwork is due, I think, in May. And ours isn't due until, I think, July 25th, per the agreement. So, you're going to have until July 25th to get your nomination papers in.
Starting when?
Probably within a couple of weeks, now that it's been-
We've heard that before.
Well, that's what they're working on right now.
You just asked a question. That's what they're working on now. Fred did what he was supposed to do by sending a correspondence from us. Mike just found out it's approved by the Secretary of State. They're the ones handling this because it's a district seat. It's no longer the local-
Yeah, and that's - yes. That's what I was saying, that if you go to the local person, they're out of the loop.
Yeah, but no, they're - well, they may be out of the loop as far as decision-making, but they will be notified.
To print the paper?
I think all the cities and towns are aware of the situation that we're in right now. And I - it'll be taken care of. And I feel confident with, um-
I'm glad you do, because I've been asking - I've been asking these questions for about four months, about five months or six months. And that's about what we get. Well, it's, you know, it's going to be coming.
Yeah.
But it hasn't come yet, you know?
Well, like Mr. Booton said, it's sometime in July for your-
Just a ballot with -
I have not received that. We provided them the raw material for the ballot.
Yeah.
That's it.
It's not finally, Mr. O'Hare, so-
Well, when that takes place, could you get us a couple of those?
If it's sent to me, I will certainly send it.
Well, I would think if it wouldn't be sent - If it isn't going to be sent to you, who is it going to be sent to?
I don't know. I'm guessing the town clerks, but I don't know that.
The biggest thing for anybody that gets elected in any office is getting people to vote for them, to get on the ballot. We're in a situation - This began over a year ago, almost two years. And we're still in, you know, in a little flux of how this is going to happen.
Okay, so, uh, we skipped over something. Do we have approval of the minutes? I get a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Booton?
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Gigi?
Mr. LeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Gigi?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes.
Mr. Bahu? Mr. Espinoza?
Yes. Okay, report of the superintendent, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As was mentioned in last meeting and publicized throughout, we've had some tremendous success here with our Skills USA competition. Even as early as today, and I'm not really prepared to present this tonight, we were notified that we were one of 24 school districts in the country to be honored with a distinguished medal again. Incredible achievement. I'll have more information for you at a later date. However, better said, are two of our outstanding students that have leadership roles in Skills USA. I've asked them to come tonight to talk a little bit about their experiences at the districts and also a little bit about what's in store for us as a school district at the end of the month at the state competition. Nicole and Anthony, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Nicole Helms. I'm a senior in Design and Visual Communications. And this year, I serve as the chapter president.
I'm Anthony Malisi. I'm in Programming and Web. I'm a junior. And I'm serving as the chapter vice president.
So, earlier in March, we had the annual Skills USA District Four Conference held here at Greater Lowell. And we had some amazing successes. We had the highest medal count in the history of Greater Lowell at the conference. And 78 students will be moving on to compete at the district conference. We had some amazing students come out and volunteer as well. And it really was a great day.
So, in two weeks, we'll be moving on to the state conference, which is all the schools in Massachusetts competing. As Nicole said, um, we'll have 78 students competing. We're very confident that we'll hopefully bring some people to Nationals. We know we'll be bringing two people to Nationals because of our achievement in the Model of Excellence program, as you mentioned earlier. Um, we were notified that we were chosen out of thousands of chapters in the country to be a model of what a chapter should be in Skills USA. So, that's a very big honor for us.
Very good.
Thank you for making us look good.
The leadership, right?
Yeah.
Can I just ask you a question? You said we had 74 students?
Uh, 78 students.
78 students?
Yes.
Now, roughly how many students in total will be there?
Um, I believe it's around 2,000?
I think it's around more, like 3,000-ish.
Well, that's fantastic. That's a pretty good chunk of the participation from Greater Lowell. Congratulations.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, next on the agenda is the monthly Cooperative Education Report. Senior placement. We've also included, uh, the director also included the junior placement report, which is customary for this time of year.
Any concerns that you see?
I think it's the same as we've talked about, we've been discussing.
So, nothing's creeped up on us?
No, I do think that, you know, some of the junior placements are, uh, are obviously a little bit higher. And, you know, but that's not the only benchmark that we look at. I do think that, you know, we got to look at and we continue to look at, and you saw the list last year. And I've been really working with the director to try to identify some of these companies, specifically on the Route 3 corridor and participating with that innovation and tech focus. That's a key component. I am concerned a little bit with the hospitality. But there's a lot of positives here. And, uh, you know, and the number's a little bit higher this month. And again, I know that's one benchmark you can look at in terms of the number of students compared to the past. You know, we've talked a little bit about this last meeting. Uh, so, that's a little bit of my feedback.
Thank you, Superintendent, about that. Think the numbers are coming up? Thank you.
Next on the agenda, there was a request for an update on some security measures. Let me preface this a little bit. I took the liberty. Uh, it is a detailed report with multiple bullets. Uh, I also want to preface the fact that some of these items might be best served for us to talk, which were allowed under the law in executive session. So, uh, if there are some questions after I go through pieces of this, I want to highlight a few pieces. I want to put that disclaimer out that perhaps, under the law, we can talk a little bit about some of these items, security measures, under executive session. But the first two slides, three slides, I listed some of the measures that we've taken as a school district since August of 2017. I want to also preface that these reports are actions on security and not reactionary to the tragedies that have happened in our country, specifically in Parkland, Florida. These are items that we continue to look at and we have been looking at again since August. If I may, I'd like to highlight a few of these bullets. And I can, of course, answer any questions. Uh, the first number is, I can tell you this, that the top of my agenda for every administrative meeting that I have, the word "safety" and "safety measures" is included. It's something we spend time with at every leadership meeting. I also ask the leadership team to include that as part of their agendas when they speak to their teachers in groups. Uh, I think it's important to continue to have that as a focus point as we speak. I meet with the police on a bimonthly basis with sometimes the principal, sometimes the associate principal. Uh, we talk about different things that have happened in the building, our relationships with students, but also our security perimeter issues. And also our communication with public safety. We have a variety of surveillance cameras in the building. X is a representative number there. It's listed, so you see that. I can tell you that there were some additional cameras that were added over the past month in the building, set them out. Uh, just to give you a highlight, if you didn't know this already, there's a list of all our security personnel and some of their timelines and what they - when they work, how they work. Uh, these are obviously all under our fiscal budget. Uh, we also take measures to hire additional security with special events that we have both during the day and evening. We're well aware of the school resource officer and also the measures that this committee has taken through the budget process and how important it was to add another school resource officer for the 2018-19 school year. We have hall monitors and we have 14 early-morning monitors. These are teachers, the 14 early-morning monitors, that arrive at 7:10 and are stationed throughout the building for entry of our students. They monitor students as they come in. Some are placed in the back of the building, some are in the front. They're very effective in terms of visibility for teachers and also, obviously, students. And I do think that the most important part of these early-morning monitors is the relationship building that they present to students when they enter. Often, the research says that the first adult that faces a student sometimes makes or breaks their day. Uh, so, having our staff, our talented and dedicated staff, be able to say hello to a student, greet a student, I think sets a good culture mode for our building starting the day. And these 14 teachers are real effective, and I really like the way this works. I think you know very well about our visitor-enter-entry process, safety and evacuation drills. We have four drills by state law every year. We've completed three in the district already, the school. We've had two Alice trainings that have gone extremely well here in the building in protocols and practices. And one of the key things about the training is the debriefing. And we look at some of the items that we worked on and whether we need to look at a best practice, whether we have to change something. And it's amazing, every time, we find some things that we think that we can do better. And I'm really happy with the work of Jamie Costa, his staff, and obviously Principal Davis putting this together. At our quarterly class meetings, I've asked Mr. Costa to talk about safety around the theme, hear something, see something, say something. And if you notice, walking between here and the front door, you'll see that sign three or four times. They're posted all over the buildings. Again, these are all things that have happened since August. I can tell you that we've added three more additional early-morning monitors since March to effectively work exclusively at the bus ramp, greeting students coming in. Uh, as a case in point, if I'm available, that's where I usually spend my morning. I usually go down at the bus ramp. I'm usually with Mr. Bladus, and we greet students if I'm available. We've spent some time on the administrative FOP system that's just about ready to be in place. I'm going to skip the next item, if you don't mind. We've revisited all our door, exterior door-locking procedures, and we've made some adjustments to that. We've also have produced a booklet of pictures of every exterior door and are in the process of making sure that they're labeled properly. This is in case there is an issue and police - we need to communicate with police to identify what door and where it may be. So, I can share that with you at a later date. We're not done with that yet. We've also recirculated - This has happened since March -- security assignments to incorporate a front guard at the gate at 6:15 to school opening. Usually, we have a guard from 7:50 on. I've asked that the guard be there at 6:15. And this person pretty much just greets cars coming in. We don't stop cars in the morning. We don't stop buses. But it's mainly surveillance. We've also strengthened the visitor greeting area for better control. This is specifically for parents and the sign-in procedures. So, that's been pretty much some of the changes that have taken place. Some of it is not changes. We've just strengthened it. The request came to say what may be some new security considerations going forward. And I've listed two priorities. The first priority, if we had to look at, was to institute a full security audit with best-practice recommendations. I was also asked for price ranges. This would be primarily an outside group to come in, look at our best practices, identify that, identify any potential weaknesses that may have. You may ask me, Joe, let's do this today. Part of the issue, there's not a lot of groups that do this. There's not a lot of good groups that do this. I've been talking to the police chief about this. I have a meeting on April 30th. Hopefully, we're going to be able to get a potential, uh, name of someone that may be able to do this. I also may talk to our community member schools about potentially sharing somebody that may be able to do an audit here and do an audit at our four other high schools, if the other schools would like to participate in that. That may be an option also. That's the first priority. Priority two is a list of items. Uh, is considering an active detection program. I've met with the group that provides an active detection program. This is mainly a sound-detection program, which would pick up sound and sonar based upon a potential gunshot. Uh, so, I've priced that out to kind of look at that as a second priority. Uh, one thing, I think, that we may need to look at going into the next school year, and you've asked for recommendations, is adding two hall monitors. I'd like to look at them as part-time, 15 hours, one in the morning between 7:00 and 10:00. And another one between 12:00 and 3:00. There's associate costs listed next to them. Another item is continuing to look at our front perimeter and perhaps installing a mobile arm gate entry system. We have an arm there now in the back. We do, but it's, you know, manual. Perhaps looking at a way, like if you look at developments where people buzz in, uh, may be an option. Install another determined number of cameras in the building that may help in some areas. And then the last item is really from a Security Industry Association guideline, which actually, I've listed some of the as a representative in the back of this report, so you can see where we get some of this material and research. I really don't have anything to talk about in regards to that, but I wanted to give you that as a representative piece. But the meet-and-greet really goes to the early-morning monitors, where the component of mental health and being able to address student mental health is as vital as anything we do in our building. And being able to address students in the morning specifically and throughout the day, I think is an important consideration, which we do well. All our teaching staff does well. Uh, but also to think about this from a mental health perspective, which we can talk about. Obviously, there's other considerations. These are not the only ones. We've looked at better signage. And that's something, I think, we're going to see a big change this summer. We're going to do some of our signs over. We're retrofitting the old security hut to make it the School Resource Office Center. Some of those suggestions came from this table. Dollar's there because we don't need any money to do that. The dollar's representative. And which we continue to do, always continuing to review is with our transportation vendor, review all bus security procedures. Because sometimes, that's the start of potential issues. So, uh, these are some of our considerations. I - it's a moving goal line in some respects. So, we never end this. It never ends. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I just want to let you know that it's a conscious thing. And I can tell you myself, Ms. Davis, Mr. Costa, and all of our school staff and our students. I think we all think about this all the time. And I know you do, too. And one of the reasons you asked for the report. I'd like to continue to update this committee on this area. I think it's important to be able to do that. Uh, one other smaller item I'm considering is to potentially put together a very small security ad hoc committee in our school, made up of teachers, a few people from the leadership team and some students, to kind of talk about some of these items and get a feel for things. I frequently ask students, "Do you feel safe"? I think some of the feedback that comes from students is as vital as anything that we see in a report or see on a piece of paper. I'm open to entertain any questions, thoughts, or reflections.
Mr. Booton? Mr. Chairman threw you to the superintendent. Uh, if there's something I ask that should be left in an executive session, please. Couple of questions. The back gate is locked from 8:00 to 1:30. If there was an emergency, a fire, a police call where multiple outside sources - There could be a cruiser in Pawtucketville. They think the gate. Is there a protocol in motion that if we have something where multiple police are here, somebody's going to unlock that gate so they can come in? Locky, want to jump on that?
Yeah. The security guard, as soon as we have an emergency situation that pops up, but we know that, they are out in the front. They have the keys, and they shoot right to the back gate and open up. We have a lot of emergencies with, uh, you know, ambulance and that. And they, a lot of times, come in through the back gate.
Okay.
So, that's what we do on a regular basis.
Whenever a code goes out?
Whenever a code goes out.
Someone's up there unlocking that? And we have a backup, I assume?
Yep.
Okay. I usually run there myself. Next question. Uh, we've had fire drills. I think once in that year, I've been here, it was freezing outside. And it wasn't just a drill. I think there was smoke. Do we have a protocol in place that the buses are notified? You know, some sort of emergency protocol? We call the bus company, say, "Get the buses there now". Because we don't have a nearby, other than maybe one of our school committee members' houses, but I don't think they can fit 2,200 students and 350 teachers. Is there a protocol for that?
The bus protocol's in place. Actually, if you can recall, we've used-
The bus protocols in place, actually, if you can recall, we've used that back in September. We had we had a. An early morning fire drill at approximately ten of eight, five of eight. And we kind of turned, remember, we turned the buses around to come back. The other part of the question, we obviously have an evacuation route planned. So if there's some sort of issue within the building where we needed to evacuate, we have a spot, which is. The building before Cronos, I can't remember the name. I should know this. That is our meeting spot. That's where kids move to go to.
All the way up the.
That's it. That's the spot. Yeah, that's it.
That's a couple of miles away.
No, it's not. It isn't. It's about less than a, less than a mile.
The one thousand one Pawtucket Boulevard, Mark?
Yeah. That's our, that's our rally spot.
Rally spot. Now, have you talked to the owner of that about letting our kids in if we needed to or? I'm saying, all right, say there's a situation where there's smoke in the building, the kids have to go outside and it's one of those three degree days.
We're going there. That's our rally.
We're gonna walk?
We're walking there. That's our spot.
That's better than getting the buses here. That'd be quicker.
Yep, that's the spot. That's the spot during the emergency.
Wow. That's a long walk. Okay. Great work. I know it's a constant thing that you've been doing updating, so I appreciate that. One of the things you mentioned was working with the police about. Certain businesses that could come in and maybe do some of this work. Have we looked for any grants? I know Methuen got a grant for what they did. If we can, if we have or you have and continue to keep looking, I think that would help. All of us. And then my last question, Mr. Chairman, would be. The retrofitting the security hut for the new school resource officer we're having, is that gonna be done by September next year?
Yes, it'll be done by September.
Excellent. Thank you very much for answering all my questions.
Mr. O'Hair.
Mr. Booton. Did I hear? What just, a security hut? Are you talking, what are you talking about the security hut?
I'm saying the one, the old entrance way when people came in.
Oh, okay.
There was a security guard there.
Yeah.
You're.
It's inside.
You're converting one of either the hut that we used to have the security in or the area off to the side.
T inside. It's the old security booth.
I was gonna ask about that.
So the old security booth.
I was gonna ask about that, but it's because it's been sitting there for a couple of years now. But a very good question. I think you've answered my question. When I, I worked in Boston most of my life and in most of the big. Sky. Scrapers and other big buildings had a situation. A box type area to put all the equipment in for emergencies or fire or anything else. That was always the first spot where a firefighter would go, you know. Not company employees, but you know, people that are in the fire department or whatever it is. And that was going to be the. But we didn't need to do that because we started building the new building that we have and we kind of. Set up a new headquarters that you use now where people come in and get their cards to get into the building. But I always, I really haven't seen any action on the original building. That was right in the lobby downstairs in the in the school. And it sounds like that's the building you're gonna be looking for for if you need. Flash items that are gonna go on on or off when something happens in the building. If that's the, even if it's not the case. Or if it's not gonna be the case, what are you gonna do with that? Piece of property that's in the the main entrance into the into the school, which we haven't really. Used for a good period of time. Is that gonna be part of the security?
It's gonna be the new security spot for the school resource officers. It's holding up Mr. Collins's plaque right now.
Yeah.
That one, right? That you're talking about?
Yeah, that's the, that's the building I'm talking about or the room that I'm talking about. But is is that gonna supplement what we have now or how is how is that gonna interact with what we have now for security? And as Mr. Espinola mentioned, that's what you're gonna use for something else. How how is that, how is that gonna work out?
That's gonna be the. Physical space for the resource officers. One of the focuses of putting together a new job description for the resource officer is visibility. And again, that came, a lot of that came out of here, the discussion here in the past months. Is being able to have that center there.
Okay, so that's gonna be strictly. For security people, that'll be. What else?
School resource officers.
All resource officers, yeah.
The security will stay in their normal spot.
And is there any action between, any way to communicate between one and the other or is that gonna be two different departments?
This phone, there's.
Should be a communication.
There'll be communications hooked up in the booth. There'll be also. There'll also be the computers and that, so you know.
I think that's a great idea and that's that's a great idea that was used for the longest period of time in some of the major buildings in town. And when we did all the construction here, that kind of got left out of the gate. I think there were some.
We built a new one.
There are things, there's a couple of, say it again?
We built a new security spot where everybody goes by.
Oh, yeah, I know that. I know that. But I'm just talking about that, the building as it exists now, it's very rarely used. But that is a good, that's a good use for that, if that's what your plans are. I didn't realize that. I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Booton.
On one of the other pages I added, you know, the police, I know that the there's certain administrators. That have access to the video cameras should something happen in the school somewhere. And I know the police have fobs inside their glove box boxes to get in, but do they have access or a program? That would also allow them to see the video feeds inside the school if need be?
Not today, but it's been one of the discussion points and it's gonna be in place soon.
Very good. Thank you. Sorry about that.
So it 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 should also be known that. If we do decide to move forward, this happens to be something that I know a little bit about. If you happen to move forward with a security team to come in and do a synopsis of the security here. There'll be remote cameras, which would be part of the. The uptake of of the system. The remote cameras would go to the. The local police department, so they'll be able to have sort of a command center. With all of the cameras. And with those cameras, it's called a spot shot. And you guys might have heard it. And there's a, there's, 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 there's different levels. There's a yellow, there's a green, there's a red. And and we're able to cross. Triangulate. Where the shooter is and the shooter may be moving to according to the sounds that the spot shot picks up. Which in turn is being trans bonded back to the. Wherever the command section may be, the police department. Most likely, probably the police department because you would like to have it offsite or a command van of some sort, so. When, there are several companies that do, that come in and do the assessments of your securities and. They have levels of protection, which obviously come with a cost. And I think. Most of them are in South, South Carolina, North Carolina. They have, they have some, and they also have grants. That they give out as a company just to get their stuff out there because this is relatively new things. That are being put in place just to fend off these type of attacks on the schools, so. It's something if you if you do catch something on the internet, peek into it a little bit because it's. If the superintendent is gonna bring it forward in the future to be something that everybody would would wanna have a little bit of a grasp on.
Somebody came here a few years ago and tried to. Products, some of that, but.
That was a social media. That was the GeoGrid, social media picking up.
Didn't seem to fly, but.
Yeah.
You know, this is not going to be whatever we're talking about. I can understand it. I can't communicate too much about what would go in there, but. That's not, that's not just gonna be an overload station because if you get something just shortly down the hallway. It'd be restricted to police, fire and a lot of major items other than. What is in the. What is in that room right now that we.
I believe that would come with the assessment, when we get the assessment, we take it over, we start moving forward with the two resource officers. With the new redo of the resource officers station. I'm sure that we'll have a bit of better command on it. Is the school resource officer that we have now, do they? Are they with you when the buses come in in the morning that they they sit at the ramp with you?
No. No, they don't.
Where are they? Most likely.
Most likely in their office.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that report.
I wanna thank the committee for their support on this issue. This, I really appreciate your continued. Sense of urgency on this and supporting me whenever I ask for money in this area. Thank you. Thank you for taking this seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Anybody else have any other questions? Security, it should be something that we will be delving in. Appropriately in the future.
Just one thing, one question, you asked. One, one thing on the security, I mean, everything you just talked about is good and I. Are we gonna? Release some space for some of the security that we have right now and not use that area as security? Or is it really gonna be the, you know, like a two-phase security system that it sounds like you're talking about now? One for the existing, you know, the security that we have right now. Which is the canvas, the mountain, you know, everybody. And also the old greeting station, I call it, which is security also. They're not gonna replace each other. They're gonna, they're gonna complement.
We're retrofitting the old security or the greeting center, as you call it, we're retrofitting that to become. The school resource officers office. That will be the, we're retrofitting it.
Yeah.
To to give them everything they need in there. And we're gonna make that a, pretty much a command center. For the school resource officers and any security issues we may have. Fires, whatever, when the, when the fire comes, the police come, that'll be the central command point for the superintendent. And the rest of the command staff.
We we have outside of, you know, security, we seem to have a pretty good greeting station right now with the facility that we have right down to the. You know, the level for us coming into the building.
Oh, yeah, it's fantastic, yeah. Okay, a report of the business manager?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, the business office update includes an audit update and an OPEB update. Before we get to the OPEB, I would like to invite Cheryl Burke from Melanson and Heath, the contracted auditors, to present the review and findings. Thank you and thank you for our.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about the results of your fiscal 2017 audit. I see that you have the audited financial statements, that would be the bound document with the blue cover, as well as the governance letter. I'd like to thank Billy, Joe and staff for the assistance during the audit process. We appreciate everything that they do. To make the audit go smoothly. So I'm going to talk about some of the highlights of the audited financial statements and if you have any questions as I go through that, please let me know. So I'm going to start with the independent auditor's report. That is the page that follows the table of contents. The independent auditor's report, the first page of the report. Talks about management's responsibility for the financial statements and management is responsible for. The preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Those are the guidelines or the rules for financial reporting. In addition, management is also responsible for designing and implementing a system of internal control. Relevant to the financial statements. The auditor's responsibility is to express opinions on the financial statements. And if you go to the second page, in the middle of the page, this is the opinion paragraph for the financial statements. This opinions is what is called a clean or unmodified audit opinion. It says that we believe your financial statements to be materially fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. I'm gonna skip by some of the pages in the M D and A or management's discussion and analysis section and go to the numbers pages on page eleven. There are several different presentations of financial information included in governmental financial statements. This first presentation is what is called the government wide or a long-term perspective of the district's financial information. It's a very summarized look at your financial position as of June thirty, twenty seventeen. And it includes all activities of the of the district, all governmental activities, the general fund, capital projects, your grants and revolving funds. As well as your self-funded dental fund. So looking at page eleven, the statement of net position. This looks very different than some of the financial information that you typically see that's produced by the business office. And this is because it's a different look at the financial information. And you have items here such as capital assets and many long-term liabilities such as bonds payable, compensated absences. Which represents the value of accrued time from your employee, by your employees. And then you have two very large liabilities that are on this statement of net position. If you look down the bottom of the page, there's something called the net OPEB obligation. And there's a liability of thirty nine million, five hundred thirty thousand dollars on the books. The net OPEB obligation, OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits. What this number represents is a portion of the unfunded liability that exists as a result of allowing your. Employees and retirees to participate in your health insurance program. The number comes from an actuarial report that you hire a contractor to calculate that amount. And this was put on the books recently, a few years back. It's from something called GASB forty five, governmental accounting standards board, pronounced, but number forty five. It actually represents only a portion of the full liability that is out there. Next year, in fiscal twenty eighteen, this number's gonna go up significantly because. Of a new governmentalist accounting standards board, GASB number seventy five, that is now gonna require reporting the full amount of the liability here. It's important to note that this unfunded liability is not new. It's something that's been out there. It's just a requirement of the of the reporting standards to put it on this page of the financial statements. The number right below that, the net pension liability, fourteen million, nine thirty nine, nine ninety two. This is another type of unfunded liability that was started in fiscal twenty fifteen. It's your proportionate share of the unfunded net pension liability from participating in the Middlesex County retirement system. So this number comes directly from the retirement system financial statements. These two numbers have the effect of driving equity on this method of accounting down significantly. If you look at the bottom of the page, the net position, you can see that unrestricted number, negative fifty one million, six ninety eight, two zero nine. And so this is a very alarming page. It's the first numbers pages that folks see when they when they get past the M D and A section. But it's really nothing to be alarmed about. All governmental entities, all school districts, counties, towns, cities are required to implement these governmental accounting standards boards. And actually, your bottom line number, your total net position is in net positive four million, one fifty six. Most governmental entities as a result of implementing the the OPEB and net pension liability requirements. This number's in the, in the negative. So again, it's nothing new. It's nothing that you have to budget for. This page is particularly useful to the bond rate, rate agencies that do the bond ratings. The next page on page twelve goes with that previous page, and this is a very summarized income statement using that method of accounting. So this is very different than what you use for budget purposes and for managing internally. Give you some examples. So when you purchase capital items, you typically expense them under the method of accounting that you're using for for recording to your books. Under this method of accounting, those items that you would purchase would go on the statement of net position and you would recognize the expense over time. And that's where you're seeing this depreciation expense. So that's just one example. So it's very different than what you're typically used to seeing. The third line up the bottom, from up from the bottom is the change in net position and that's the net income or net loss for the year. And you'll see that's negative four million, five five six, eight oh five. And that's a result of the changes in that OPEB obligation as well as the net pension liability. So those are some big numbers that are feeding into this one. On page thirteen, so that's a long-term perspective and GASB is trying to get everything on the books with that perspective. all of the long-term assets and all of the long-term liabilities. On page 13, yep.
Who is enforcing the OPEB and the GASB? Is that the the state or is that the federal government?
It is accounting principles that are generally accepted in the United States. So it's not a local, a local guide or anything like that. It is the accounting standards. And so in order to get a clean audit opinion, you have to implement these standards, and you have to put these things on your books. So it's it's basically every, everybody that's following the standards in the United States, all of the governmental entities.
Even the state?
Oh, yeah, the state, the state of the state of Massachusetts, their financial statements would be recording the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so. On page 13, so we were just looking at the long-term perspective. Starting on page 13 is a short-term perspective. It's called the fund basis of accounting. It doesn't have any of those long-term items, such as the capital assets or the net OPEB obligation or the net pension liability. This method of accounting comes straight from the district's general ledger or the district's set of books. This is the basis of accounting that you manage by. The reporting requirements, GASB's requirements, are to report major funds separately, as separate columns on this on this presentation. So you'll see that you have the general fund column, which is always a major fund, and a capital projects fund. You're at the tail end of that project, but it's still calculating under the guidance as a major fund. And then everything in the non-major governmental funds column represents your grants and revolving funds. One of the key indicators on this page of the financial statement is down in the fund balance section, specifically in the general one fund column. I'll start with the assigned number, the $1,319,342. What that represents is $800,000 that was budgeted to be used in your fiscal 2018 budget, and then $519,000 of encumbrances at this point in time. The number beneath that, the unassigned fund millions, $1,744,847, this is a particularly useful number to those that are managing the district. This is what is commonly referred to as E and D. It's really the E and D starting point. But it's it's a very important number, as I'm sure you are aware. Your E and D at this point in time is about 4%. The guidelines in Massachusetts say that you cannot exceed 5%. In the prior year, my understanding is that you did, and that you had to return or reduce assessments in fiscal 2017. Page 14 is a reconciliation. I'm gonna skip right by it. And then page 15, this is your income statement on on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So again, you have the major fund columns, general fund, capital projects, and non-major governmental funds. Down towards the bottom of the page, the the highlight of 2017 was the proceeds of the bonds, $9,190,000 in the capital projects fund. One other very useful page in the financial statements to users of the financial statements is on page 17. This is the general fund budget versus actual page. The column on the far right is the variance column that compares the final budgeted numbers to the actual amounts. And then you'll see up the bottom of the page, on the far right, $381,591. So you entered the year net positive with your budget. The two driving factors in that are up at the top, total revenues exceeded budgeted by $339,576. And then going down towards the bottom, you underspent appropriations by $42,015,000. Pages 18, 19, and 20 are the proprietary funds. This is your dental self-insurance fund and activity for fiscal 2017. And then, starting on page 21, are what are called fiduciary funds. You have two types, private purpose trust funds, this represents your scholarship funds, and agency funds, these are your student activity funds. I had some discussion with Billy Joe earlier today, and my understanding is that your 2018 budget has budgeted to put $200,000 into an OPEB trust fund. So next year, when you look at your financial statements, you're gonna see another column on this page reflecting the amount put into your OPEB trust fund. On page 23, you have many pages of notes to the financial statements. These are also required by the standards in recent years because of the implementation of those two new GASB's, OPEB and net pension liability. The disclosures for those two items have really consumed the footnote disclosure. So I'm not gonna go into detail unless you have a question. It's very interesting.
Are you all set?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about the next report. If you have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, before we get too far ahead.
Yep.
On page 11, last year versus this year, cash receivables. Do you go back through and, and my train of thought is because there's been a couple of municipalities and government entities that either a cashier is taking money or has an accounts receivable to come, it's posted for next year. But when the cash comes in, nobody's accounting for that cash, and then they wipe out the past debt or the accounts receivable before. Does your audit look at that?
I I believe it does. Some of the procedures that we take to be sure that this number is accurate, for the intergovernmental receivables, we do what we call a subsequent receipts test. So we're performing our procedure subsequent to year end. We typically very heavily test the balance sheet items and including receivables. So what we would do is is to verify that those are good receivables and have been collected subsequent to year end. So that's really the substantive part of our testing. And then there's a second part of audit testing that relates to the internal controls, something that you had mentioned in what you were describing. We also are testing to a certain extent your internal controls. That's what a situation could happen if you had a lack of segregation of duties. If you have one individual that was perhaps doing too many functions related to receivables. So they were billing, they were collecting the receipts, they were posting those to the general ledger, and that would be a situation where that could be possible. And we did not identify anything like that. You do have a very good segregation of duties currently in your your system.
Next question. When you're determining irregularities, and I I briefly read about this, I don't know if it's a way, but there's certain things you're looking for that will pop out as irregularities. I don't know if it's something to do with the number 13 or something. There's certain oddities that could pose. Do you use financial software to plug in to see this is out of skew when it shouldn't or what's common, not common?
To a certain extent, part of part of our auditing standards, those are the guidelines for conducting the audits, are to what they call perform a risk-based audit. So part of the part of the audit process is to sit down with the audit team and identify areas that we consider to be risk areas and kind of focus our our testing on that. Sometimes we are using some of the the methods that you had described. There are certain things that we know are risk areas that we look for. In particular, we we don't look for the number 13.
I forget the number of those, analogy versus, but there was something to do with a certain pattern, the way I read it. I thought it was interesting, and
It is, yeah.
when I saw you, I would ask.
There's lots of fraud schemes, you know, things like payments to vendors that are using acronyms. You know, we frequently are Googling the vendors that you have. We get a complete list of all of the vendors and looking for payments to cash, looking for payments to individuals, debit card use. Those are all examples of of risk areas that we would be looking at during your audit.
And then I, one last question. Do you do, I assume you do work with other schools? Do you, do you, maybe not from a software standpoint, but just as a human looking at the stuff, do you say, wait a minute, something's out of whack here? Do you step back and look for those type of, you know, we do work in our auto shop here. Money comes in, money's going out for parts. Do you get to look at that too and like compare us to other schools for, you know, that's one brief example. But on that analogy, do you use that in other departments?
We do, actually, as I mentioned, part of a risk-based audit is to identify the areas of risk for each entity. We do it on an individual client basis. And decentralized receipts collection, such as you described with the auto shop and some, that's considered to be a risk area because some of those procedures fall outside of the business office's regular procedures. And every audit cycle, we touch upon and review and do a walkthrough and testing of at least one of your departments during the audit process. And we gotta rotate that every every year. So we, you have a very good system of receipts for just
We've taken your advice, I mean, taking the school, the clubs, taking them out of being just a regular fund and putting them into a school control. That was one of the things Billy Joe implemented when she got here. So that, I guess, brings up another question. For, let's go with the artisan restaurant, and maybe superintendent or Billy Joe or maybe you, Cheryl, this would be you. Year after year, we have receipts coming in on a daily basis. We have food that's being purchased every week. Does anybody look at the discrepancies to say, we're bringing in X amount, and typically we're here, and when we bring in this amount, our cost comes? And when we have a low week, funds-wise, are we still up here with our food costs? Is that something that's analyzed by you?
We do it frequently. We just did it this past Monday.
Thank you very much.
We also do it to, to a certain extent.
Excellent. Okay, we set that up good then. Good. Thank you very much for your patience with me.
Oh, no, no, all good questions, and we don't do it on a weekly basis. But we analytically look at all of departmental, actually, all of your revenues and expenses analytically against your budget, for unusual items, that sort of thing. So that's all part of the audit process as well. And you bring up some some good questions. A lot of the things that you're talking about are are your internal controls effective. So part of the audit process is if we had identified anything that would be considered to be, as defined by auditing standards, a material weakness or significant deficiency in internal controls, we have a responsibility to the school committee to report that in a management letter. So with respect to internal controls, we had no issues like that. We do have one issue that we reported related to student activity funds. The current guidelines in Massachusetts with respect to student activity funds are that you need to have an external audit, and I'll use the word audit, it's not truly an audit, but it's what they call the agreed-upon procedures, every three years on your student activity funds. And we had performed that in fiscal 2015. In the off-years, there's a requirement by the state for you to perform those procedures internally or to contract out to another group, or Masbo does that type of work. It's not officially an audit. So in 2017, you did not perform that internal audit as you should have, and that was one of the things that we had identified. We've talked about it on what what you can do internally or if you feel like you want to hire somebody to do it. So 2018, you're coming up on the three-year cycle, so you would have to have the external audit on the student activity funds.
Okay, fantastic.
Just real quickly, in addition to financial statement audit, you are subject to a, what they call a single audit, used to be an A133 audit, it's now called the Uniform Guidance Audit. What it is, is audit of compliance with your respect to your federally funded programs. We performed that this year. We looked at the school lunch program and the IDEA grant. We did have one finding with respect to the food service program. Part of one of the, what they call material compliance requirements with the federal guidelines are to test the students that are receiving free or reduced lunches to make sure that only students that are eligible are receiving those. We we test a sample of that. We did find an exception in our sample, and we've discussed it with Billy Joe about procedures, internal procedures that can be implemented to prevent this sort of thing from happening. My understanding is that has been implemented already. And then you do have a letter here. I'm not gonna go into it in detail unless you have questions. But this is a governance letter. It's required communication from us to the school committee. It does identify that issue that I mentioned about the student activity fund audit. So that was the one thing that needed to be reported to you. That's on page five.
The cafeteria one didn't need to be?
That's in a separate report that goes to the federal government. So that, along with your audited financial statements, goes up to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse and is open to public inspection. You can search the Federal Audit Clearinghouse website for that.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So any questions on?
Have we fixed that problem?
Yes. So just so you understand the food service finding, historically, our school has done a POS system eligibility thing. The food service management company runs all the applications through their POS system. So when we did a food service review while I've been here, they identified that there should be a second set. We should now go in and confirm them. Like, we should confirm the numbers that they run and make sure that there's backup documentation proving their their income. So if the POS system said they were eligible for free and reduced lunch, but we didn't verify, and then the auditors come and check, if the income backup doesn't, if their backup documentation doesn't confirm that the student is eligible, then that's a finding. So now we've implemented a system where the business office takes all of those applications, and we sign off on it too. We check the backup data.
What happens with that deviation or that problem?
Nothing. It's a, it's a finding. So it's something that they identified as, okay, you have a weakness. When they identified the weakness, we had already corrected the weakness when I came. But we can only fix it in the fall when the application process occurred. So by the time they found it for last June 30, 2017, we had already corrected it. This past fall, Carrie and I now review all of the folders that the food service people have submitted.
Okay, and then what about the student activity funds? What is now in place to solve that issue?
The student activity fund
Where I guess you have to do an internal?
Oh, yes. So that's a new law, as she mentioned. It was 2015 that it was implemented. And the new law states that that we have to do an audit every three years that would be conducted by them. And then someone has to do an internal audit with the two inner years.
Okay.
As you know, that sometime this earlier in the year, we voted to have me officially serve as the internal auditor. I didn't know that that was a rule, that you had to officially get it voted in and so that you could say a voted person conducted the audit. Prior to that, we always do a reconciliation between the student activity director, Lauren Sayer, and my office to make sure that everything is, you know, eligible for the spending. We don't wanna spend prom money on football. So we've already been doing audits and reconciliations. It just wasn't according to the new rules where someone like me has been voted in. So we already solved that problem before they identified it as well.
So those two issues are now in compliance?
Yes, they were in comply, they were in compliance prior to them bringing it to our attention. But when they do the audit, it's as of June 30 of last year.
Okay.
So anything else with the audit?
What does POS stand for?
Point, it's really the point-of-sale system.
That's what I figured it was, being a retail guy. And how does POS administer how somebody's eligible for lunches? When point-of-sale is the point-of-sale, like you buy a Twinkie, you pay for it.
Right.
How does it tell you you can't afford this Twinkie?
No, I, I don't know if it's just a generic word that they use in that industry to describe this system. But with the food service program, you plug in all the student information and it plug, it will, you know, input-output, it gives you a report saying who's eligible. But again, that's only inputting what the parents gave you. So if you don't verify with all the backup documentation and the auditor comes in and finds it, it's not the POS system that was wrong. It's whether we verified or not.
Super job. How clarify that question? The the POS system connects with our student management system. So the data, to answer the question, student
Makes more sense.
Goes into the student, the point-of-sale system. So it takes the data right from our student management system. So that's how it reads it. So there's a collaboration there.
So there's no human people involved in that? It's all data input from us that goes into that?
Now we have to do the human component with the audit finding, which has been done already.
Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Booth? My my understanding is when we're dealing with low income, low, moderate income, most of it isn't by paperwork anymore. People aren't bringing in their taxes. This is people that may be getting WIC assistance through either SSI or other means. So the majority of things are coming in electronically.
Yes.
When you say you go and check the paperwork, you're you're saying computer work too, is that right? When you say you go and check the paperwork, you're, you're saying computer work too, is that right? You don't have to have physically something written if you get a message that this person is on assistance, public assistance, so they qualify.
Right, so when we run a system, we download free and reduced kids from the internet, and it shows anyone on food stamps, anything that's getting, any type of public assistance will automatically run through the system as free and reduced. What this situation is, is if someone got free, I mean, free or reduced lunch, and they were someone that wasn't on that list.
Okay.
And if they, we cannot back up that they had-
Then you need the paperwork.
Right.
Do they require paperwork? Do we have to print something out for everybody, or do they go in and look and understand they're already getting food stamps? That's enough, we don't need a paper document.
Right, so the food service review, people that came in prior to the audit, so we've been audited on that three times luckily, because it teaches us where we can improve and, you know, things like that. The auditors check that download from the government, and they know that that's government-issued. What they're checking is more the POS system and whether we've verified.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Boot, and not all the people that are eligible to receive reduced or free lunches actually apply to get federal stuff, so they have to put in those documents.
They have to bring in their tax returns or something like that, so, okay, thank you. Superintendent?
Ready for the next item. Let's finish with that one.
I'm all set with that.
I want to, I want to set the table for Billy Jo. She's done an outstanding job on this next section on the OPEB actions we need to take tonight. This board did a really good job a couple of years back, accepting and creating an OPEB trust. You did that, I believe, about three years ago, anticipating that there was going to be potential money to be funded. Last year, there was a series of money that's in this year's budget to go into OPEB. Again, great work by this group. In the process of trying to invest that amount, the $200,000 that was set aside, new rules have come up with OPEB, the laws have changed. So this group, Billy Jo's done a good job pulling it together, needs to take a formal vote on the new resolutions. They're listed in the back under the green tab. Also, in the past, there was a board that was set up. Some of the members here were on a board. There's new options now. The options are, we can create one custodian, the treasurer, to manage that account. Or we can set up the retirement board, which would be Middlesex. Or we can name three to 15 individuals, three to 13 individuals, with one person with investment experience, one citizen of the governmental unit, one employee, one retiree, and one officer. There's an option. We both feel strongly that voting and recommending, making a recommendation of the treasurer, taking this role is the way to go, however you might think differently, Billy Jo.
I agree, I think that we should go with the sole trustee option, simply because we won't have scheduling conflicts. If we go with the sole trustee, the designated person would be the custodian, which is the treasurer. They don't, they won't make any decisions that you would have to agree on. You're already agreeing on the amount we're investing in OPEB through the budget process. So designating them as the sole trustee is simply giving them the authority to make a wire transfer when it's time to move the approved budget from us to the PRIT, the state retirement system. So we, unless you want to have a board where you meet just to say, "Okay, we approve us moving the money to the state", then you can designate, we, we got legal, we got this off the state website, and they obtained their legal counsel's advice to see whether, how we handle it if we do the sole trustee. So it's a two, it's, there's two options, it's the sole trustee option or a board of trustees. And again, it's simply to move the money, not to vote on how much or anything like that.
Doesn't it say three options? Middlesex County Retirement would be the, the option, and they'll tell us.
She said two options.
Mr. Gigg?
The third option was B, I think, the retirement board of Middlesex County. And why wouldn't that be a reasoned board to utilize that? Because it'll say transfer the money.
No, I'm not sure how Middlesex, it's not Middlesex, it's actually the PRIT, the state PRIT board, the pension reserve board for the state.
Yeah.
So it's different than this. We're trying to invest our money in the state retire, the state trust fund. And they take our money, our retirement money, and they invest it together, like, almost like a mutual fund. So, and the, the two options, again, would be you guys developing a board of trustees for the OPEB, an OPEB trust, or to have the designated sole trustee, which is the custodian, the treasurer, that the, the state law designates as the custodian.
What's the negative?
To do what?
To having a sole one individual?
I don't find, and this I confirmed, and I can share paperwork, I mean, email trails with the state with you, I don't find a negative with this, because, again, he's not doing anything. You're still going to vote on the amount of OPEB, you're going to vote on everything. All he's going to do is what he already does, which is his signature would be the one to move the money into the state investment fund. So he's simply doing what he already does, he's going to be like the signatory just to make those moves. But he's not going to be allowed to do anything other than what you already approve in the budget notes. But if you'd like, we could actually get some of that, you know, the email trail with the state to you, the investment, you know, all their legal documents. It's all on the website, but we also have an email trail where they confirm things with their lawyers, and they share it with us.
I just get nervous when there's only one signature required for that kind of money.
Right, and I understand that, and that's why I'm saying whatever you feel comfortable with, but I want to make sure that you understand that it's not that you're going to have one signature on anything happening with the money other than when we move the money into their fund. That's it, but you still, he cannot do, and no one, the sole trustee can never do anything without you approving the budget first.
Mr. Boot? So what I'm understanding is, as a school committee, we're still going to say we're putting 200 in, we're putting 250, 350, 150. Once that's in, the next option would be convening a board that includes all those different people you were talking about. Somebody with financial experience, is it a teacher, administrator, all that? So we could have that board meet to agree to sign to send it to the, I forget the name of it.
PRIT.
The PRIT.
To be invested.
Or we can just designate our treasurer that, once we agree to put 200 in the OPEB, he'll sign and send what we ask him to do.
Right, and just as a point of clarification, if you designate the sole trustee, you, as a board, will still have to approve a procedure, procedures and guidelines. So if you state on one meeting after you vote to have a sole trustee that he could never make the move to transfer the funds until it's approved at a regular school committee meeting, you get to do that. So it's your, it's almost like you're making the rules for the sole trustee. It's just a way of avoiding having to schedule things and get people here just to do what he could do with your authority.
Mr. O'Heave?
Just one quick question, how does Aramuck fit into this situation? You know, if, everything is, it looks like it's a level or a couple of levels beyond that, but do we talk with them over how the food preparation or whatever? Or how does, are they just treated as a vendor?
Judge, this is the retirement benefits that we're working on now.
Yeah, but you were talking about some of-
That was before-
Yeah, all right.
With the auditor.
Okay, so Aramuck with the previous stuff that we were talking about with the point-of-sale, that was, yeah, they, they're the ones that handle it, they, they're involved too.
Yeah.
So my question would be this. How often would we need to make a move of this money?
Once a year.
Once a year. So how often would it be an emergency that we wouldn't be able to schedule a group of people to get together to make that decision? I've been on a credit union board for over 20 years, and it never was really a big deal. We did it over the phone, actually, sometimes. Not, not that I'm questioning what it is, I, I just think that this might be a little bit getting to be a mountain out of a little molehill. So, to me, I think that we don't need any email trails or anything like that. We believe that this is the way that the state would, would, would like us to do it. So I guess what we're just looking at as a board is, do we want to make a, it's going to be more than a subcommittee, it's going to be a board of trustees for the, for the retirement fund. So it'll be our own little retirement board for our money for the school that we're putting aside. Or we let the treasurer do it by themselves, or we let PRIT do it? Should we, do we need a decision now?
Not necessarily, if you want, it, it's up to you as far as when you want we-
Think about this if you want, definitely can think about it.
Mm-hmm, and you can, that way you get a chance. When I mentioned the email trail, it was more, it explains things in more detail. For instance, one of the things, one of the benefits of having the sole trustee versus, like you said, if there's only one meeting, what's the big deal? The only problem is there's such, there's so much language with the law changes that state, you have to have someone that has X amount of investment experience. And when I spoke to the officer, the senior officer with the state, even they would have to clarify, what does that actually mean? It's very ambiguous, so it just seemed, I was, we were trying to-
So 24 years on a credit union board investing-
Oh, there you go.
A billion dollars.
I agree.
Might work, right?
So you just solved our problem. See, that's my point, we were trying to make it simple, but you just solved it, so.
So, so I, that's why I'm looking at this going, I don't think it's a big fish that we're frying right here. I think it's, I think we should, this is really something that is cutting-edge for the board to think about, because this, this, I'm sure we could change it, but it's something that is long-lasting, and this liability is going to be on this table in front of us for a long time, if not forever.
Mr. Boot? Is the only function of the board or the custodian to, if you had a board, you'd come and say, "The school committee decided to put 200 into OPEB." Does everybody agree? If the majority agrees, then you sign and it goes into the state fund?
No, and this is all new, and we're all running through the new laws, but from what I understand, it's, that would be the main function to move the funds. But from my understanding, speaking to the senior officer, when, if you would have designated a sole trustee, it would have been you given authority to him to do things like the declaration of trust, which is, we have to get our lawyers to look at before we do any of that anyhow. It's all that paperwork type of stuff. So they would have done the declaration of trust, and they would have done the official wire move. But other than that, I don't know of anything else that they would have done.
So if the declaration of trust is done, the group would meet only to either approve or disapprove the school committee's vote to put the money in?
Right.
So if I look at it that way, having a committee to do that, if the school committee's already said, "Put the 200 in", I'd hate for five to 13 people to say, "No".
But the question is this, where is "in"?
Oh, into PRIT, right?
Mm-hmm.
PRIT.
PRIT.
If PRIT can manage it, we can, we could guide them with, because they have a limited amount of places that they can invest this money. It doesn't sit in a money market account.
Is it true, we would, we could, if that board could then tell PRIT where we want the money to go to?
No, no, you don't tell them. PRIT does what they want with the money, but you oversee, you, you don't oversee it, but you guide along with them how they're spending the money. The treasurer would be the only one that would be looking after it if you do the treasurer. The treasurer will be meeting with whoever the money goes, wherever "in" is, PRIT, and they'll be the only ones that will have any say in what funds that money goes into.
No, they're not going to be involved, you, even you as a board would not be involved with PRIT. When you come together as a board, and whether you, you know, do the declaration of trust or decide when the money's going over, they still have control, it's like a mutual fund.
They have control.
Mm-hmm.
They don't have full authority.
No, that's what you would give them when you invest your money, and if you, so you don't get to have-
No, I don't think so.
I think we need another meeting.
Yes, we do.
I think we shouldn't do a-
Mr. Gigg?
Just a, a-
It's our money, I don't, you, you can't just give them the authority to invest in whatever they want to.
If you look at the options here, it's kind of interesting. You could have one custodian, which would be our treasurer, is what they're recommending, to basically transfer per our recommendations. The next one, the next one's the retirement board, which sounds like they're experts in investing money for long-term beneficial use for retirees. So they have the experience allegedly-
Which sounds like we give them, them the money anyways, right?
And then the next, the, the third option is five to 13 individuals with investment experience. That sounds like, you know, there's a reason they want five to 13 individuals instead of one trustee. And I'm not really understanding why the complexity, and, and you got the retirement board, they're allegedly, they, they have the expertise. Okay, I understand that one. Then you got five to 13 individuals with a vast amount of experience to basically transfer money? And then you got the least offensive, one person? It, to me, it doesn't really fit.
So this form, this resolution was offered by the, by the state officer, I mean, it's by the state, and it's the senior officer that provided this for us, and these are just options. And again, when they have the board, some people do want to have hands-on, because it is a great experience for you to pay attention and, you know, be involved and all. They gave you the option of the single, the sole trustee, because often boards have a hard time with scheduling. So I think they were doing that as a technicality, like, giving you the option to designate the custodian, the treasurer, treasurer to make, you know, to sign the declaration of trust, to make the moves. It's not saying that you wouldn't be involved still, but, again, we, I have no objection to the, the board, you know, the board being developed, I actually like the idea, because you learn a lot. It's just, we were giving you the chance to have a convenient option. We brought that to the table because that's part of the new law, that's part of the new options. But if you want, I can look into it more and bring it to you next time.
I'd kind of be interested in pros and cons with each one of the options that are being-
Okay.
You know, just break it down, four pros, four cons, on each option? And then we might be in a better position to make a decision on what we're choosing. And I have to defer to your expertise, because this is your background.
So the good news about this is, we thought, we put this in here today thinking we had to make decisions based upon, you have to bring it in front of the, the state board, their board of directors. But I just learned from the auditor that we don't, even though we, see, we thought we were running out of time because June 30th is quickly approaching, and we had designated $200,000 to be invested. So we thought if we didn't get that money in there, if we didn't set this up and do what we had to do and move the money, then we'd lose the opportunity to put the joint-
But that's not true, right?
Nope, the auditor confirmed today that we would do a manual entry, keep it in our cash account until we decide which investment vehicle we're going to use, so this-
And do we have her opinion in writing as to that statement, so we don't?
As far as, how, that's not even an opinion, it's just her giving, I can get it for you, I'll email her, so that she'll email back explaining how to handle it, it's more, and then as far as the opinion, if you wanted to, I could obtain an opinion from her asking, even from an internal control point of view, what is your opinion on us doing a sole trustee versus a board of trustees? Because I always seek their advice on everything.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Very good, thanks.
All right, we'll table this total business for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
I think it's important to understand that this one is our money. So if, even if there's one person that is directed to divert the money into PRIT, whatever, PRIT's going to have to address us occasionally, telling us what they're doing with the money and whatever, because what if they're investing it all into marijuana sales and you don't want it all, you know? So it's, it's, it's an investment vehicle that somebody needs to watch over. It's just like when I was at the credit union board, I can't imagine it's any different, but I'll look into it and I'll have an answer next time. But it's, it's a significant amount of money, it's our money. I can't imagine you just write a check and send it away and put some wings on it and, and someone else is taking care of it.
I can't understand why you just don't run a bare-bones operation. Superintendent is, is responsible for a lot of these items. You have a business manager, you know, and it's only two people, but once you get into it, custodians or other groups, the price of it's out of, out of control.
Okay, old business now. Any items on the agenda will be brought up in this section for discussion purposes only. The first one, one man, one vote requirement, any more? Mr. Boot?
Can we remove number seven, number nine, and number 10?
Get a motion, second?
Don't you have to vote?
Be good. As long as there's no objection from anybody?
You have a motion, so, okay.
Seven, nine, and ten?
Yep.
Nine's mine.
Oh, yours? Nine is yours.
Yeah, but you're the chair.
So you ripping mine out?
You've got your way. You want to keep it on?
So I'll just take all yours out now.
Okay, fair is fair.
Alright, so we'll take them out. Alright, one man, one vote, getting back to that one?
No, we can just go through these unless somebody has an objection.
Anybody have anything to talk about, about the, uh?
I'm, I'm still confused with the one, oh, no, the one, one man, one vote, you know?
Yeah, that's something we'll have to talk about.
Hey, we're talking about.
Leave it on there then.
I just got the.
Let's leave it on there.
Something said, submit, um, nomination papers by such and such a date.
We don't even have any information up until the.
That was the email that the, that we gave out at the last school committee.
Oh, okay, because I've been down to City Hall and, uh.
They don't know what's going on.
George, what you still have to understand is this board right here inside the walls of this room have absolutely no control over what's going on.
Right.
Uh, so we just got to go with the flow.
No, no, no. I, I disagree with you.
Then you need to go on the outside.
I don't think that's acceptable, alright? Because we've been playing with this for over a year. And now, you know, trying to get some information, I went down to the election commission in Lowell. Oh, no, I don't handle that in Lowell. So there's all sorts of changes.
So do you have a motion that this board should do to take care of all this? Because we've tried this and, and, and nothing ever happens.
Well, so are we going to quit?
There, there's nothing we can do. We lost and we got to wait for people to give us the answers.
They're telling you to do certain things. And I'm saying to myself, how the heck are they going to do these things? Right now, for example, the time, um, submit nomination papers and you have to have all your papers in a certain date. Unfortunately, that date doesn't coincide with the rest of the, uh, other people, uh, the other people's voting, uh, happen.
The other people have primaries.
Again, George, it's not up to us. We can't change all of that.
Why, uh, I think the whole plan is changing things, alright?
I, we have tried for, since I've been on this board for almost five years.
Yeah.
To try to figure out what was going on. And if we didn't push the ball forward with Mr. Long, we wouldn't even be this far.
Well, it's, 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 it's almost criminal, alright?
But it's nice that you did push the ball because we did get somewhere ahead. So it is.
Oh, yeah.
I'm glad that you are bringing it to our attention.
Yeah.
And then we got a little closer with Mike Long recently. So the fact that you are persistent, George, is really helping the cause. You better get Christine before she leaves.
What?
Put on a Christine and find out, in case she might be changing, uh, um, positions. Okay. Alright.
As I said, there's four, four campaign parties going on right now in the city of Lowell.
Yeah.
Alright, those people are getting ready for an election.
You have such a support group, you could do it in two hours. I want to new business now.
I'm not trying to be, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're using.
We already addressed this with the council earlier.
And you failed. And there's no, there's no.
No, we didn't fail. The city of Lowell failed. They sued us and it's, they, they haven't completed their task.
Well, Joey, excuse me, Joe, you're living out of town. We're Lowell guys, you know, and we operate a little different than, uh, so I'm just trying to get to find out what is going to happen.
Living out of town? I think I'm part of the district here.
Yes, now with one man, one vote?
So, um.
I'm just talking about.
We're going to go on to new business. Is any committee person's motions, any reports of subcommittees?
Who? Uh, yes. For the longest time, we had something on the agenda to dedicate, uh, a piece of this building for George D. Cool Harris.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we have finally, uh, and it was a lot of pieces that just wouldn't click. People are flying to Europe and Greece and everything else. But we're all set. We met with the family. Cheryl, uh, helped out, uh, quite a bit, mostly it was done by Cheryl. Uh, but we're all set. We're trying to put a date together, uh, identify those people that are going to come. So this thing will, uh, come to fruition prior to the end of the school year. And we're working on that right now.
Very good. Fantastic. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Booton?
Motion to adjourn?
No.